Agents.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome everyone here this evening. We do have a agenda before us. Are there any changes to that agenda? If not, we'll operate under that agenda and we will move then to Agenda Item Number Two, which would be to consider the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting that was held on February 12th, 2019.
We'll move.
Second.
Motion by Craig, seconded by Ross. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. It's in. Close voting. And that motion does pass. Move then to Agenda Item Number Three. Consider the award of bids. This would be the award of bids for the removal of the hazardous material and miscellaneous debris from the Marshall Hotel. With that, Glenn. Glenn Olson, Director of Public Works, City Engineer.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. You can see by the memo that we did receive one bid for the removal of the hazardous materials and debris that's left in the Marshall Hotel. This is something that we would have to do whether or not we demolished it or if we sold the building. The one discrepancy in the bid was the bidder put in a 1% instead of 10% bid bond. And really, that's just guaranteeing that he would enter into the contract. So I did speak with the owner and he apologized for the mistake. He said he'd make a new one if necessary, but he would be intending to accept the award of the contract if the council awarded it. So after that discussion, the recommendation is, in one motion, that we waive the irregularity of the amount of the bid bond and award the proposal to advanced health, safety, and security of belt in Minnesota in the amount of $72,468.53. Now, in saying that, that one motion was because it's hard to break up the motions in this paperless method. So that's what we'd like to do. If there's any questions, I'd certainly take them. We've worked with that company before. Just seeing.
Thank you, Glenn. Questions?
Mr. Mayor and Glenn, I guess I have a problem with the 1%. I know we've worked with them before, but you know, if we have problems in the end, we've only got $724 to go back with. So-
No, that's just for accepting the bid. It's not a performance bond.
No, this is the bid.
It's just a bid bond. So I'm okay. You're right. If it would have been a performance bond, yeah, we wouldn't have done it.
Based on performance, to address that, because I kind of, you know, I like to always have a little bit of leverage. We always have the ability to dispute the invoice.
Sure.
If we don't believe that the work is proper, correct?
Yes.
Am I to understand that there was only one bid?
That's correct. And usually we have at least two bid holders. One is from on the video. That's the other one that we normally get. But we only got one. No. He was substantially under the next lowest bidder in the last project we had. If you remember, it was $1,000 versus several thousand dollars in the last project that we did with them. So I was comfortable. He had a real good defined breakout of each floor and the removals of the materials and the location or the... He understands that they have to be in a specified disposal at a landfill that's capable of taking it.
And would the removal container, would that be in the rear or the front, or would there be a blockage of the sidewalk or street, parking area?
Yeah, we've talked about either location. And so we could locate it in the back because you can have access to the apartment, parking lots from one side. But so there could be a blockage there. We won't find that out until the pre-job conference. We could also have some in the front, depending upon what it is. The issue with having it at either location is fibers that might disappear due to wind and the wind tunnel in the back alley, for instance. So it'll have to be confined for the hazardous.
John?
Just along with that, as far as like say overnight or whatever, is there covering will be provided over the container?
Any required materials would have to be contained. Yeah, any of the hazardous.
Yeah, and I guess along those lines, my concern would be is that there's... And I know it's hard to secure any of these containers, but at least make it difficult for somebody to inadvertently, not understanding what it is, do some kind of vandalism. I mean, just to say, oh, it'd be fun to take all these marked bags and throw them about the street. And you know, because they're going to be in an unsecured, unlocked container as the work progresses. And that's the only concern that I have is making sure that that's as secure as possible so that we don't have inadvertent vandalism to the materials that are being disposed of.
We can discuss that at the pre-job.
Yeah.
Any other questions? If not, you have the recommendation. I would entertain a motion.
I make a motion, accept a bid.
I'll move.
Motion by Jim, seconded by Russ. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote.
I did, but it won't come up. You submitted.
Careful, Jim's helping you.
That's all in. Voting's closed. And a motion does pass. Move then to next agenda item, which is Agenda Item Number Four, which is a consent agenda. We'll bring the items up on the screen that are on the consent agenda. And they include the consider the request of Marshall Area Chamber of Commerce for a St. Patrick's Day parade that will be held the day before St. Patrick's Day on March 16th, 2019, through the vacation of the utility easements in Carr Estates Fourth Edition, and receive the petition for the vacation of the utility easements, and call for a public hearing. The South High Street, South Whitney Street, the 100 and 200 block alley improvement, consider the resolution declaring the adequacy of the petition and ordering the preparation of the report. Consider the maintenance agreement for the driving simulator currently at the Merit Center. And then finally, consider the approval of the bills and the project payments that have been submitted. Are there any... Is there any item on the consent agenda any member of the council wants removed for purposes of separate discussion?
Number seven, please.
Any other item? If not, I would entertain a motion for-
I have a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by John, seconded by Steve to approve the items on the consent agenda with the exception of item number seven. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. Voting's closed. The motion does pass. Move then to Agenda Item Number Seven. Russ?
Mr. Mayor, thank you. I just need to understand the process for this. I spoke with a couple of residents along that street, and I guess this has been an ongoing problem with mostly with water flow to the west or to the east, excuse me. So I just need to help me understand the process. Glenn?
Okay. Thank you. The project was proposed by the property owners along there. And generally, the water in the area runs from west to east and from both ends of the alley to the center. And so there's two real distinct issues here. One is the water issue. One is the alley condition issue. The intent of the project will be, and you'll get this in the report, is to install catch basins at about mid-block. I don't know if you know Leon Baisi, but it's between her and her neighbors that the water comes and not only ponds, but floods into the garages. A couple of them there. So the intent would be is to install some catch basins there. A few years ago, we did install a stubout from the storm sewer from East Marshall Street to the alley so that we wouldn't have to dig up the alley at this time. But at that time, there wasn't enough flooding going on that they really thought was necessary at that time. So the intent would be is to install a storm sewer line from East Marshall Street north to the center of the alley, as well as between the two properties that is the lowest area, trying to get a drainage swale for high water levels that would empty out onto South Whitney Street. So that's kind of the idea of the concept of the water issues. Now, the alley itself, they have the same situations as other people along there. The alley itself just drains across the alley to from west to east. And they'd like to see an inverted crown put into it to take some of that water to this, to these catch basins down the center of the alley and then dump into the catch basins. Now, no matter how you design the storm sewer, it's going to be designed for probably a 10-year storm. And as you know, we've had significant rainfall events greater than a 10-year storm in the last four or five years. So there's... It doesn't take care of all the problems, but it takes care of majority of the problems. The, you know, a two-inch rain is fairly significant and it would probably accommodate up to something like that. So the process will be the initiative project. We come back with a feasibility report that says we can do these three things. We can do storm sewer only, regrading with asphalt, or regrading with concrete. And we did have a area meeting with the property owners, and they were interested in seeing both of them or all of them. But the kind of... You could see it in their eyes that maybe the less expensive project would be best and go from there. So the feasibility report is a good thing to have, no matter what's done. The other issue is, is that, you know, we talk about the surface water fund. That's for maintenance of existing systems. So the intent would be is we would take the project for surface water, just that, let's say it's 400, 500 feet of eight-inch pipe with catch basins on the end, and spread that to the properties that would contribute to that runoff. So that's the intent of it. Then from then on, it would be the city's responsibility to own, operate, and maintain. But the initial installation would be spread. Now, that's not going to be real expensive because we're coming down the alley with a pipe to a couple of catch basins. And you'd spread it probably to 16 to 20 different properties. So-
So Glenn, my question, this problem just didn't start overnight. It's been ongoing for many years.
Yes.
And it's not on the city's radar. So is that why the homeowners had to petition?
Yes.
Okay. All right. So I understand.
And it is a really good method of project development because it initiates it from the people who have the problem. Sometimes we don't know of the problem except when those certain events happen and it's bad enough to complain to us. A lot of these property owners there, they're not looking for a handout. They put in sump pumps and they put in, you know, buckets in the ground, put their sump pumps in and pump it to the street. And they've kind of just kind of had it with water that's been coming into the garages. That's kind of the tough part.
Okay. Thank you, Glenn.
Russ, this has been an ongoing problem for, what, 25 years, Dan has it? So yeah, this is not... And I think they've approached the city before about this.
Yeah. And we actually had a project there when we did the East Marshall Street one.
But not enough people wanted to do it.
But not enough people. It was a drier time.
It was.
It's been wet the last few years.
Thank you, Glenn.
Okay. Any other questions?
Dan, if you've got a comment, come forward and-
Yeah, come forward to the mic.
Hi, Council, Dan Ritter. I was just wondering, you know, when you're talking about the feasibility of it and the price comes back or whatever, is there any way this project hopefully not would be killed because property owners don't want to participate? Because that's what's happened in the past. You know what I mean?
The adequacy of the petition, pardon my-
That's just fine. The issue will be when it comes down to the assessment process. And there's some people who don't have a problem because they're on the high hill.
Right.
And they're in the drainage district. Okay, you all are aware of water flows downhill. And but we would take a look at and indicate participation by anyone who puts water in the system. So we'll just have to play it out.
Okay.
We'll go from there. We'll see how much it is. That's kind of how we have to do it.
Because I know there's one property owner here that, you know, he not only gets water in his basement, he gets two to three feet of water in his master bedroom in his basement. And it's happened a lot. And we all contribute to it. If we're high or low, it doesn't matter. It's... I just hope that we can get something going. So, thank you.
Any other questions about this item?
I move approval.
Second.
Motion by Craig, seconded by Ross. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote.
Your system went on vacation, didn't it? Hope it went somewhere sudden or more.
Close voting. And the motion does pass. We'll now move to Agenda Item Number 10. This is an informational item. It's a presentation on the Enterprise Fleet Management proposal for the city of Marshall. I'll call first on City Administrator Sharon Cantwell.
Mr. Mayor and Council, we did have some conversation with some of the council members about looking at leasing of vehicles for our fleet. And this has been a project that the city clerk has looked at probably over six months ago. And the staff has heard a presentation from Enterprise. And the staff has recommended that the council hear the presentation. The next step after the presentation would be, if the council wanted to pursue it further, would be to refer it to committee. That's... This is why it is for informational, only except for the fact that if you wanted to refer it to committee, that would be one action or by consensus. So that's a background on why this is being presented to the council.
Representative from Enterprise, and I'll ask you to introduce yourselves. Welcome.
Thank you, Council and Mayor. My name's Wong Nystrom from Enterprise Fleet Management. I hate public speaking, so I'll say that first. I'll start with the informative piece of the slide. If you see the first one, we are the only vetted fleet services provider that has partnered with the Association of Minnesota Counties. On that, we've presented to the entire board of commissioners as well and entire county board. Several of them are actually partners with us as well. The... We also are part of the League of Minnesota Cities, and we also support the Minnesota Sheriff's Association. I'm here today to go through exactly what fleet management is, and we'll go from there. There's a clicker. Okay. Down. We'll start with references that many of you would know. The reason why we have a lot more counties is that's where I started. I've been in the automotive finance business for over 20 years. Eight years with Enterprise Fleet Management. And so we partnered up with the Association of Minnesota Counties first. So I have a lot more clients and partnerships through that formation. As we've been growing with over 25 counties in Minnesota, cities get involved. They talk to one another, and we're slowly building that traction up with a lot of cities. Cities of Stillwater, Rosemount, Cassin. The unique part about, like, what a lot of people don't know is we help manage the entire fleet for the city of Chicago. So there's several thousand vehicles that we manage as well for cost savings for them. My average client has 48 vehicles. So when we're in Minnesota with a lot of cities and counties that we work with, the average size is only 48 vehicles. It's not that big. The other flip side, on the commercial side, just to give you a little background, as well, is we work with a lot of general contractors throughout subcontractors. We work with a lot of hospitals, a lot of educational co-ops, Southwest Health Services, which Line County is a part of as well. We help manage those vehicles. Horizon Health, which is made up of a joint powers agreement with six or seven other counties as well we work with. A lot of the Drug Task Force from Hennepin County and Inoka County, we manage those vehicles as well. Okay? So the good news is you're not a guinea pig. This isn't a trial by fire type of situation. We... Around the country, we have over 1,000 government entities that we've already partnered up with, from the big to the small as well. On the nonprofit side, we work with Lutheran Social Services, Good Samaritan. And then in Minnesota alone, I work with over 150 locations for the nonprofit organizations as well, from a lot of mental health centers and to RNs and caseworkers, those who need vehicles as well. We help manage those fleets. Recently, we partnered up with South Central TSA, which is made up of a bunch of counties as well for the soil and water district managers because they all drive pickup trucks as well. Then we'll go into a little bit of a little background on who we are. Most of you know us as Enterprise Rent-A-Car. We are the state bid-winning rental car company for cities and counties. The reach that we have is we help manage over 1.9 million vehicles. That's not to brag to you. That's to show you we have data, information, benchmarks, industry averages. We have the information to help manage a fleet on a data-driven type of technology. The other part of it is how good are we at doing that? Well, we're a $23 billion company. It's a family-owned. And once again, that's not to brag, but it's to show you, we've been doing this since 1957. Our founder named was actually with the aircraft carrier, USS Enterprise. That's how we... Our name was founded. So veteran. And so it's a big deal that it's family-owned and local relationships are very important to us. We have over 6,500 locations now in the United States in terms of the national, local reach as well to the communities that we serve. I'm a government and nonprofit specialist in Minnesota. I handle Minnesota and the Dakotas. I'm actually working with the county of Minnehaha in Sioux Falls. So they're looking at fleet management as well. Here's the common themes that we find looking... I'm working with a lot of governments' entities is the budgets are tight, the fleet is not the top priority, it's a necessary evil. You need vehicles. Let's not worry too much about them. We don't like dealing with them, but yet we have to because they're a necessary asset to have. And then there are always tasks to do more with less. So the biggest thing that Enterprise talks about that we'll review in the analytical pieces is the financial impact that it can do for the city. To Enterprise, on our radar, safety is number one. The reason why we recommend new vehicles on a good cycle or rotation is because of safety first. It's top of mind to every single council, city council and county board that I talk to. Vehicle technology and design has changed dramatically over the last decade even. But we all remember the time with analog brakes and seat belts being the staple of safety for the vehicles. Well, in today's age with the number one, you know, crashes and fatalities actually increasing mainly because of distracted driving, vehicle design has changed significantly. So this has been a major concern that keep a lot of councils and boards awake at night looking at the vehicles that are being driven today. Also, we find that the green technology in the environment is becoming a big deal with more hybrids and electric vehicles as well, having lower carbon footprint. City Brainerd hired me looking at the carbon footprint on the type of fleet that they have. So safety, going back to this, is there's been improved crash tests done each year on vehicle design, and it gets better and better each year. What we find is in 2007, became... Becoming standardized where all vehicles to be sold in the United States had to have analog brakes, airbags, and front and side crash tests done in 2007. In 2012, electronic stability control became standardized. For those of you that don't know, we partnered up with the Institute of Highway Safety. And they touted basically that behind seat belts, electronic stability control is number two in safety. Most people would think airbags or analog brakes. They're saying it's electronic stability control. And what electronic stability control is, being able to have that technology in your vehicle where when you react to a distracted driver, you're able to maneuver the vehicle to avoid crashes in the first place. That's what they're touting behind seat belts, is the second most important safety feature design. If your fleet is older than 2012, you don't have it. That's the concern that we bring up to the table. We're also finding in today's age, in going from 2017 to 2019, blind spot warning are becoming more available on vehicles, side door. Intrusion beams are even beefed up as well as collision warnings and blind spots. So you can see the trend is moving towards designing vehicle for safety. But yet, the old adage for most cities and counties is, let's buy a vehicle and let's run it into the garage. run it into the ground. That must be the best way to manage the fleet in terms of taxpayer dollars. What our data proves is that that's not true. And that's what we want to focus in on, is looking at the analytics behind our technology. Okay? So, how does your fleet look? So, I obviously have your fleet data, and we looked at it. You have 16 vehicles that predate analog brakes. I don't know about you, but I won't get in a car without analog brakes or airbags. That's a personal choice, obviously, right? But when it's a city or county or public vehicle, you're tasked to drive what you're given. We want to change that. 28 of your vehicles, out of the 50 that we looked at, by the way, predate electronic stability control, and over 44% of your fleet will be older than 10 years from 2019. So, those are safety concerns in our eyes. I hope you agree by looking at least the analytics. So, looking at fiscal responsibility, though, we'll look at today's challenges, when we talk about being tasked to do more with less. There are a lot of cities and counties I meet with, they are fiscally stressed, there's not a whole bunch of ways to increase revenue, they're underfunded under the capital budget, and the average age across the state is around 10 years old, 10 and a half to be more specific. It's about the average age of a city or county vehicle prior to working with Enterprise. You drive low miles, between 5,000 to 10,000, looking at your data, you're on 7,500, so you're like smack dab right into what the trend is across the entire state. So there's nothing totally different there. The capital budget generally drives the replacement policy. So I'll give you an example. Up here on just a sample, shows a vehicle fleet budget of $700,000. 250 of that 700 might be for buying vehicle acquisitions each year. As you can see, though, majority of the money is spent on operating costs, your maintenance and your fuel costs. That takes up majority of the pie. What we want to do is be able to predict and lower your capital budget, but dropping your operating costs significantly as well. And how do we do that? It's going to be with finding the right replacement cycle for the vehicle. The best, each and every vehicle will have a life cycle, that's the best time to get rid of it, so your operating costs are significantly dropped. Okay? So if you imagine this, your capital budget might be here, and your operating budget is up here. What we want to do is shift it, and take all that operating budget, and put it into newer vehicle technology. Okay? So, why do you have to hire Enterprise? You don't. The only reason why we're up here and we're recommending you do is, this is all we do. We own a million vehicles ourselves, we have skin in the game as a rental car operation. We have the largest fleet in North America. With that, we have the data, we have the resources to be able to look at, how does a professional company that runs vehicles only benefit the city? It's experience, it's know-how, it's, this is what we do. You could do your own taxes, no doubt you could do it, but if you hired a CPA, they'd do it better. That's the point of the difference between doing it yourself and doing it with Enterprise. Administratively, we're going to lower the administrative burden for a lot of your department managers, that this isn't really their expertise in the first place, it's not really why they're hired. Be able to forecast as well, as well as even looking at license tag and title renewals. Anything that is done administratively, Enterprise will handle majority of that function for you to alleviate the burden, so then your department heads can actually focus on their core job. Operationally, we want to be able to look at offering everything in terms of streamlining the process, technology, software, data tracking, all the operational stuff that goes into managing a fleet. We already have those tools and technology. I know a lot of the bigger counties that, prior to working with us, they've invested tens of thousands of dollars in fleet management software, and then have to pay a monthly maintenance fee as well on that, because they have well over 600 vehicles. That is already included in working with Enterprise. So there is no software or technology fee. Last but not least, we're going to look at the financial impact of leasing versus paying cash and running it forever. Okay? During that financial piece of it, we want to be able to track all of your maintenance expense, all your fuel expense, your resale values, down to a science on a cents per mile, to each individual vehicle itself. Okay? Most cities and counties we talk with, it's kind of a lump sum. Here's kind of what we spent last year. Couldn't tell you which one we spent the most on, just got that gut feeling, this vehicle, it's time to go. Every vehicle, we want to be able to analyze on its own, and be able to give you that information, so then you can make a strategic decision with your fleet. Okay? First and foremost, Enterprise does not make any final decisions. That's your job. That's not our job. Our job is to give you information and the data, and the recommendations. Yes, sir? Do you have a question? No?
I just wondered, buy and sell vehicles. Can you buy locally? Do you buy locally? Do you bid them local, from local providers, or is that all through your company?
We buy directly from the manufacturer. I work with the local dealerships, if that's your choice, and we deliver them to your local dealer. They get a piece from Enterprise. In general, they'll make more than matching the state bid. So, that's how we help with the local community. That's how majority of counties, on the county side, want to work with us, because, you know, I'm, we just recently partnered up with, Hubbard County just passed us, Malax County, Houston County, we just partnered up with the city of Cassin, as I mentioned, as well, and local relationship is a big deal. And we can make that happen without going to the state bid-winning dealer. So, great question. Okay? So, we're going to look at buying power real quick. This is a standard Public Works, road and bridges type of pickup truck. It's just a base extended cab, three-quarter ton. MSRP, or window sticker on this one's around $43,000, give or take. You and me walking into the dealership, we could negotiate down with a $3,500 rebate that they have, and then dealer discounts, and we can get it down to around $37,000. Okay? The state bid contract price for this vehicle is $28,769. Like, $10,000 behind factory cost. It's a good buy, I wish I got it, but we don't. We pay the, around the 37. So, you get to take advantage of that pricing. Most cities and governments take it to the local government auction, and sell their asset. One of the worst ways to sell a vehicle is through the auction, but that's what's available. So when we track the data, we find a 10-year-old pickup truck, which would be like a 2008 pickup truck, and low miles, under 10,000 miles a year being driven. It's worth around $4,000. So you paid around $28,769, but you, after you sold the vehicle, your cash outlay is $24,769. That's what you bought and sold the vehicle. We're not talking about operating costs or anything, we're just talking about buying and selling. So what you paid are your cash outlay or capital outlay is $24,769. Running it for 10 years, buying it kind of till it dies mentality. Enterprise's recommendation would be more on a five-year term. That same pickup truck, five years sold, and driven a little bit more than 10,000 miles even, is worth $19,200. Now, that is a wholesale number, too, so you know, that's not retail. Retail, that truck's worth, you know, way over the 20s. Your capital outlay, though, is $9,569. Let's round that up to 10 grand, just for easy math, and double it. So that's $20,000, if you bought two trucks. You saved almost $5,000. Why would you do this? Because your operating costs just went from here to here. Common sense would tell you, right? Maintenance costs on a vehicle going 7,500 miles, which your city does, a year, it's going to have under 50,000 miles, your maintenance cost is going to drop huge. Your fuel economy is also going to improve. The newer vehicle design that we talked about first, the technology, it's better. It's been increasing at a 2.5% better fuel economy for the last five years. Okay? So your fuel economy is better, as well as your maintenance costs are down as well. So, you're going to save even more on the operating cost, as well as just the buying and selling part. If you sold it after two years, let's just say, it's a break-even. If you sold it after one year, you'd make money, almost $1,700 per pickup truck. Now, we're not advising you to rotate your fleet every one to two years, right? There's only one reason why, public perception. That's it. That's the whole crazy part about it, is public perception. Taxpayers don't want to see you rotate a vehicle every one to two years. The reality is, if most of you have gone to a car dealership, have you ever seen a one- to two-year-old vehicle? Then most likely, a lease return or a rental car. Over 70% of the time, they're my rental car. Why do we do that? Because it doesn't cost us anything. That's why we do it. If it saved us more money, and we'd have higher profits, hanging on to the vehicles longer, we would. It doesn't. Okay? So, that's the reality. You can only do this if you have buying power of Enterprise, buying a million vehicles a year, or if you're a government entity. You and I can't do this, so it's unique, right? That's why it works. It doesn't work for you and me. So, let's look at total cost, then. That's what we want to analyze, is every vehicle lands on its own merit, and looking at total cost. What that is, is looking at depreciation or what you paid for the vehicle. Let's say this pickup truck depreciated out, it's worth $22,000. Your fuel expense, your scheduled maintenance, your oil changes, tire rotations, tune-ups, then your non-scheduled repairs, driver downtime, because you hang on to the vehicle for 12 years in this scenario, and your administrative burden and insurance costs. This 12-year-old pickup truck now, instead of costing you $22,000, ends up costing you over $70,000, when you look at all the details, and actually, if you tracked it. This one averages 12 years, going 10,000 miles a year. We know for a fact that Enterprise, we can operate two pickup trucks for less than $70,000. But let's track the data. It's enough to just believe Enterprise, it's better than if we just track your data, and we can show you exactly what it is. Right? There's no guesswork or third-party trust, there's, where the facts or the numbers lead So in order to look at all the operating side, as well as the buying and selling side is Enterprise Fleet Management, we have a customized program that we look at, how we buy the vehicle, do we do it locally, or do you want me to buy it off the state bid dealership? Do you want to keep it in town? That sort of thing, on how we help acquire the vehicles. We help fund the vehicles through leasing method. Why do we choose to lease? We'll talk a little bit more about that in the analytics. But essentially, to make it simplified on the leasing aspect, is if you buy a pickup truck, let's say for $25,000, just for easy math, you paid cash for $25,000 for one pickup truck, and it's a regular cab basic for that kind of money, I can lease you four pickup trucks, let's say $6,000 apiece. So it's $24,000, right? For one year, $6,000, let's say. I can lease you four pickup trucks, for what you paid cash for one. That's why we lease, it's that buying power of being able to accelerate how many vehicles you actually can rotate in and out. Okay? We will, we have the maintenance tracker program. It's $5 per month per vehicle. We'll track all the maintenance repair on that vehicle through your local shops. If you have internal shops, can even track that, as well as if you want Enterprise, we have our fixed maintenance program where we'll cover everything on that vehicle for the entire term that you have it. Everything is covered, all the maintenance, as well as all the repairs. It's a blanket policy. The only thing we don't cover is brakes and tires, because if I put that in, you get a set of tires every year on 50 vehicles, you're going to bankrupt me. So, other than that, everything is covered. Okay? We will coordinate aftermarket vehicle customization, whether your police, you know, the police department customizes all their vehicles. If you want us to move the vehicles, to coordinate that, where it's timely and the vehicle is street-ready, as well as the Public Works, whether it's a service body, dump body, dump truck, that sort of thing, we'll help coordinate that with all the various vendors as well to make it a seamless, so, less administrative burden and less time for your department Most work with MCIT or self-insure, so you don't need our insurance program. Telematics is becoming a great option for a lot of the police and the sheriff's force. They're actually using it for dispatching versus the computer system, because it's actually faster, and more technologically savvy to know exactly where the vehicles are, to be able to dispatch an officer to near scene. So those are other options that we have as well available. This is the big piece of the software, visibility, looking at your fleet, where the department heads will have their own user ID and password and access into the system to be able to look at the fleet, from data-driven technology, looking at the maintenance costs on an individual vehicle from month-to-date, year-to-date, and life-to-date, and being able to find out next year, when we fleet plan, which vehicle should you get rid of? You have the data and the analytics right in front of you. Okay? This even sends out alerts to do oil changes, as well as recalls in real time, so they're well-informed, what's going on with their fleet. We'll track maintenance outliers, which vehicles are costing you more money than it should, as well as fuel consumption. We'll also track abuse. We'll look at all the numbers and everything in between, in one easy spot. We're going to jump right to the analysis from here. Can you pull that one up? So we'll look at the financial impact that we have. First and foremost, like I said, most of the counties and cities we work with, you are assigned a dedicated account team to help watch over, look at the data as well. We're not here to sell you a bunch of vehicles and say, "Good luck." It is three meetings a year, to look at the data, to look at fleet plan, and look at the budget plan. So those are all integral parts of fleet management, is to be accountable for the numbers that I'm about to show you. Okay? First off, this will be a typical, this is me outside looking in, when I looked at your fleet, randomly picking your 10 oldest vehicles on that screen right there, so everyone sees the spreadsheet. What this whole thing is, is looking at a five-year budget plan, like a line item type of approval. What we're asking to go to the next level, obviously with Sharon, to go to committee or what have you, is we're not asking for more money. That's the great thing about what I'm about to show you, is I don't need what you already approved, to get started. Okay? As we look at, these are the 10 vehicles, if you can see the police department right there, always important that they have the right type of the most reliable and safest vehicles out there. It's been true for all police departments and all sheriff's offices that I've met. I would argue that that should be true for every single vehicle in your fleet. What we have here, then, is the police department building maintenance public ways. You can see the columns of the 10 vehicles that we recommend replacing. That's in column B, is the department, the odometer, the annual miles, and the year of the vehicle. Then the type of vehicle it is, so we're replacing a '93 Chevy pickup truck, a 2,000 and a half ton, a 2,003 Chevy. These are all well over 10 years old, that should be replaced. Then there's the specific model, and then what to replace it with, pursuit vehicle, half-ton pickup trucks, that sort of thing, you kind of get the idea of what to replace it with. I'd want to work with your department managers and get more specific on which pickup truck they're talking about. There's eight different pursuit-rated vehicles, or police vehicles out there as well. I need to know which one that they want, and look at how to build each vehicle. Okay? As you can see in column J, we looked at the vehicle budget needed. So if you were to go out and do this yourself, and buy 10 vehicles and budget for it, I put an estimated budget price of each one of those vehicles on there, and you may see that the pursuit went up $5,600 from last year. If you go with the Explorer Utility Interceptor, that's what the manufacturers put up. So, your budget's just increased by $5,600 per pursuit vehicle, if that's what you go with. So you have to budget for that, along with the pickup trucks and SUVs. So you have to budget for that along with the pickup trucks and SUVs. You need two-hundred-and-ninety-five thousand dollars to budget for. Does that make sense? If you were to buy ten vehicles. Let's go to the next slide over. What do you have budgeted? So column K, average vehicle budget current. You've budgeted one-hundred-and-twenty-four thousand dollars, which is about five vehicles for 2019. That's what you already have on the books for. Your average maintenance spend, looking at that is around forty-one thousand dollars. That's for all vehicles that we're looking at. And then your fuel budget is around seventy-one thousand dollars. That's what you spent on fuel economy roughly, average on a given year. Make sense? What we're asking for to get these ten vehicles leased from you is thirty-six thousand seven hundred. Well less than the one-hundred-and-twenty-four thousand you've approved. So we're asking for a dramatic decrease. What that will do to your operating costs is drop it to thirty-five thousand dollars for maintenance, fifty-seven thousand for fuel. Because we're replacing your oldest pickup trucks, which in theory should be the highest maintenance cost in theory and the worst miles per gallon in theory. And get rid of them and replace them with ten new vehicles. So your operating cost is going to go down. We're also going to pick up the vehicles for you and sell them. Conservative estimate said unseen, we put the number of twenty-seven thousand five hundred on there for those ten vehicles. Obviously, I'm being conservative. If we sell it for more, you get more. But I use these numbers just as a worst-case scenario. Okay? How I came up with you owing thirty-six seven is if you go to the last two columns. It's column U says total of lease payments annually. You can see the payments in column V there for all ten vehicles on a monthly basis, just as an estimate. Which is sixty-four thousand two hundred for the total, minus the twenty-seven thousand five for your equity. That's where I come up with the thirty-six thousand seven hundred. That would be the cost for lease payments. Does that make sense? Okay? So that's year one. Year two, we're going to stay right here real quick, Kyle, because it'll be easy to kind of look at. Year two in 2020, we're going to recommend ten more. And we'll, I'll show you which ten, but it's the next ten oldest ones roughly. Then I'll pick them up and sell them. They're worth around twenty-two thousand five hundred. So you have there in column U, second year's lease payment, right? Because you have payments in the first year and then you have payments in the second year. Then you add on the ten new payments, which is fifty-four thousand nine sixty, right? So you've got to have year one, year two, and then year one of the next ten. So your total is one-hundred-and-nineteen thousand for year two, for lease payments. Take off the twenty-two five, so then the balance is ninety-six thousand six sixty, right? Go back to the left. Those are the ten that we're talking about. And to buy ten more, the city would have to budget another two-hundred-and-seventy thousand dollars for ten more vehicles. Go back over to the right. You don't. You want to be more around buying five vehicles to stay around a ten-year cycle, so around one-hundred-and-twenty-four thousand dollars again. You average about the same maintenance and fuel. And your total is ninety-six thousand, still under 2019's budget. But you have twenty new vehicles now into the fleet. You're going to see the maintenance and the fuel costs go down again because we're interjecting ten more, right? We're going to keep going down for the next five years and then swing to the left, Kyle. So for the next 2021, 2022, we're going to do the same thing and get rid of ten more each year. Okay? So that's year four, year five. Go all the way to the right. Okay. So what we have is going to the bottom one here is, can everyone see the resale of one nineteen five hundred? One-hundred-and-nineteen thousand five hundred? We're cycling your vehicles out faster, right? Instead of hanging on to them. So we're using that buying power of all sudden your vehicles are worth more for the equity. Remember the screen I showed you, it's worth nineteen thousand two hundred dollars? We're going to start accelerating those vehicles by selling them faster to get you more money on equity. As I do that, your payment goes down. And then we add on the five payments for year one, year two, and then duplicate it until all vehicles through attrition are under lease. Okay? So you have fifty vehicles that are all under lease through Enterprise. But the resale value keeps going up because we're selling them as they're getting newer instead of waiting. And go all the way to the left and then down. I've done a little summary for you. So here's the summary page. So now you all kind of see how I did the analytics, the nuts and bolts of it. This is the summary page. So if you buy ten vehicles a year and you budgeted one-hundred-and-twenty-four thousand dollars on average each year for the next five years. You would have spent six-hundred-and-twenty thousand dollars is what you budget on average on a given year. Okay? Your maintenance expense, your fuel, and then you sell just to, you know, when the vehicles are really beat up, so you don't get a lot on resale. So your total expense each year to manage these fifty vehicles is roughly two-hundred-and-thirty-three thousand dollars. Adding in your capital and your operating budget of two-hundred-and-thirty-three thousand dollars. For a total one-point-six, one-point-one-six-six-three-seven-five is what expected, looking at operating cost and capital budget for the next five years, just as a projection. Now, this is very crude in the terms of we know vehicle prices go up and we know operating costs go up each year. I just built it as if it's static, but we know it goes up. I mean, I was young. I'm old enough now where I used to get ten-dollar oil changes. Those days are gone. It keeps going up each year. And now with synthetic oil, the average oil change is sixty-eight dollars. So it keeps going up. It doesn't stay static like this. But I'm trying to be conservative, right? Under-promise, over-deliver. Let's start conservatively and then let's track the data. As you go to the right, here's what it would cost you Enterprise to lease all fifty vehicles. It'd be five-hundred-and-eighteen thousand dollars. We're going to drop your maintenance expense, drop your fuel expense. Increase the resale values on them. So your total average current budget today is two-hundred-and-thirty-three thousand. To go through Enterprise to have on a five-year rotation versus a ten-year rotation. Average should be one-hundred-and-seventy-six thousand, almost one-hundred-and-seventy-seven thousand dollars. Instead of running it for ten years, run it for five years. Okay? Go all the way to the left again, Kyle. The difference between then what you currently would budget versus Enterprise is a savings of two-hundred-and-eighty-one thousand dollars in the next five years. In our opinion, this is conservative. I think it's going to be well over the three-hundred marker, but this is conservative. Okay? As we go down, the biggest thing that I talked to across the counties is I think I believe Enterprise. I think a five-year cycle, finding the right time to replace the vehicles, lowering our operating costs, all that makes a lot of sense. Why don't we just do it ourselves? If you were to buy those ten vehicles cash each year, this is what you need to budget is one-point-four-seven-eight million dollars. That's the problem. Without leasing and having experts watch over everything, is that you can do what I'm saying, you're just going to need a lot more money. So you're going to raise the capital budget in order to get there. And that's the problem. We don't want to raise the capital budget. We're trying to keep it consistent year over year and budgetable, so then you know what to expect each year. That's the difference between, you know, doing it yourself, which costs more. And more administrative burden for your team and your department managers. This way, they can focus more on their core competency. We don't think that they should be, if they are, wasting a lot of time on the fleet because this is all we do. Any questions?
Sharon, do you have any summary comments? Questions?
I just, on the total cost savings for the, at the end of the five-year period, if you brought up that slide or...
Go back up. Down, down, two-seventy. You wanted to see the total, the two-hundred-and-eighty-one thousand?
The two-hundred-and-eighty-one thousand, yeah. I was just looking at that savings. At the end of the five-year period, if we go with Enterprise, we are leasing all those vehicles. We don't own them, right?
Correct, sir.
Under the other plan, we own them all, title-free. So in one, you know, in one situation, we own the vehicles at the end of five years. The other one, we don't own them.
Correct.
So I mean, that's a difference to consider too.
Yeah, you'd need the one point if you go up to the vehicle budget. That's why I did this stop right here. Right now, you buy five, you spend around six-hundred-and-twenty thousand. If you had to pay cash and you want to forward the vehicle. That's why I put this in for cash buying, so you understand the difference between.
Right.
You can do what I'm telling you.
Right.
And pay cash. You'll have to increase your capital budget from one-hundred-and-twenty-four to two-ninety-five in year one. Two-seventy-two, two-seventy-six, two-hundred-and-five, three-thirty-two. For a total of one-point-four million versus the six-twenty that you averaged now.
Right. And I'm just trying to point out the fact that when you were comparing those, that there were different comparisons. Because one, you own it, and one, you still lease it.
Yes.
And as far as the budget at the bottom for the fifty cars, the one-point-four-seven-eight million. That's assuming we replace them on your schedule, not our schedule. And I think some of the members of the city council have been working hard to get the most out of our vehicles and not trade them too soon. And so I just think those are things that we need to consider. And, you know, maybe we've been doing it wrong, maybe not. And so it's worthy of further investigation, certainly.
Thank you.
And on top of that comment, Glenn, what I would like to see is you do the five years when we're selling vehicles. What's the next five years look like when we're leasing them?
Sure.
Because we stopped now at the point where our capital is gone. You're correct, Glenn. We no longer have any capital in vehicles. What is, what is our expense year six when we don't have vehicles to sell?
So all fifty are leased in payments, right? So the total average Enterprise payment for perpetuity.
Per se, yes.
Is one-hundred-and-seventy-six thousand to your two-hundred-and-thirty-three thousand. So on average, I'll save you around fifty thousand dollars a year. Ongoing, because we're buying and selling at the right time. Now, here's the beauty of working with Enterprise. I have no contract. You can fire me in one year. You can fire me on day one. The biggest thing about this is that, that's why we're accountable. We're going to come and meet with you and go through the budget. Well, I can promise the council is I'll never go over your budget because you'll never sign an order on adding more vehicles in. Also, so you know as well, if you ever want to own the vehicle after the five years. About one more year of payments, you paid off the asset anyway when you own it. You can run it for four years, five years, another ten years if you want. It's your vehicle. I'll transfer title. The word leasing is a little misleading. It's not what you see on TV. Three-ninety-nine, come on down, right? That's where you're limited on miles, you're limited on, you know, you're dinged on wear and tear and over-mileage fees and all that. And usually, it's a three-year term. And after the three years, you turn your keys in and you get nothing back at the end. You rented a vehicle basically, right? That's what a dealership closed-end lease is. This is what's called an open-end lease. Means that you have a hundred percent utilization of that asset. You also get the equity of that asset at the end of the five years, when you're done leasing it. So the average residual or, it's a finance to own, first of all. The word lease, the only reason why I say lease is because a third party bought it for you, Enterprise Fleet. That's why I got to call it a lease legally. But it's a finance to own. Okay? So let's say you get into this, and this is probably the biggest question I have, year one, two, three, or year five. And you're in this, and then the new council comes in and says, "I hate this. I don't like leasing this. How do we get out of this?" It's the same way you got in. Each vehicle, let's say it's ten, right? Average is six thousand dollars balance on each. Ten-vehicle buyout is sixty thousand dollars. That's still less than your one-hundred-and-twenty-four that you average. But now you own all ten of those vehicles. Matter of fact, you could double it to twenty vehicles, right? To get to one-hundred-and-twenty thousand dollars and get out. And you own all twenty vehicles and you can run them for the next five years as well. So it can duplicate exactly what you're doing at any point in time. You can get out after year one with us. I'll pick them and sell them. As you can saw my example, I'm cutting your check back. You're going to make money. You have equity in the vehicle day one.
So if our employees take care of the vehicles, increases the residual in these vehicles.
Yes.
At the end of five years.
Yes. But that's not reality. Most of my sheriffs put bullet holes in it. They have puke. They're slimy. They're transporting prisoners. They're beat up.
Yeah.
I work with Batumis Roads.
Yeah, but you know, for other departments, we have other departments that ones that put bullet holes in them.
Yeah. I'd say majority of county vehicles are well taken care of, but the values I'm showing you there are all beat-up wholesale values.
So a question for the council. And first off, very informative presentation. You did a very nice job. You're a good public speaker.
Keep on hating it, you do well.
The question for the council is, because I'm sure that each council member probably has a lot of questions in their mind. Do we pursue this to try to get more information? If so, that detailed work likely would be done in a committee. And whether or not that's our vehicle committee, equipment committee, or whether that's because this is a vehicle question? Or is it truly a budget question? That'll be ways and means, so. Number one is, do you want to pursue this further? And number two, if so, it should be referred to a committee. And number three, there's a question of which committee should we go to?
This is something I've been visiting and shared about since I got on the council. Vehicles will come up as a cheaper lease. I think it's very worth looking at it, what committee. I think you should probably go to the vehicle committee first and then ways and probably hit them both. So we hammer down what it is and then go to the cost.
I concur.
Okay with that?
Yep.
Fine. Sounds good.
This isn't an action item, right? It's an information item.
No, but it would be, really, I'm looking for consensus on which direction it should go.
I think that's a good idea.
Is this should go to further investigation to the vehicle committee. There's a different name for that.
I know, I can't think of what it is either.
Equipment committee.
Review committee, yes. And then from there, I believe it should weigh some means.
Yes.
Everybody okay with that?
Yep.
Thank you, counsel.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Maystrom.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Safe travels.
Move then to agenda item number eleven, the appointments to various boards and commissions. Earlier this evening, and the council did have a special meeting, interviewed for the library board. And previously, council member Meister and myself and the representative of the school board interviewed applicants for the community services board. So based on those interviews, I'll recommend the following. That for the community services board, where we have four openings, that the following three people be appointed to terms that will expire February twenty-eighth, 2022. And they would be Jennifer Andres, Dr. Dwight Watson, and Nathan Deuce. And then the library board, where we have an unexpired term that will expire December thirty-first of 2019. That Amy Schoss would be appointed to that term. That is less than a full term, so that she would, if she and the council at that time. She could be appointed to two more full terms. This won't count as a full term. So I'd make that recommendation to the council and entertain a motion to affirm.
So seconded.
Motion by Steve, seconded by Ross. Discussion. Now we'll move to a vote. Putting close. And the motion does pass. We'll move then to agenda item number thirteen, consider the resolution for traffic control signage at the intersection of South First Street and Greeley Street.
Thank you, meaning counsel. Do you want to skip Foley?
You have Foley.
Oh, I'm sorry. We're on agenda number eleven, so, no, we're on agenda number twelve. This is the preliminary plat of the Foley addition. The action here would be to introduce the plat and call for the public hearing.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Craig, seconded by Jim, to introduce the plat and call for the public hearing, discussion on... Motion by Craig, seconded by Jim, to introduce the plat and call for the public hearing. Discussion on that motion. Glenn?
Just one quick question. This was brought up at Planning Commission. We talked about it after the meeting, whether or not the building is too close to the lot line, and you were going to check into that. And has this been corrected on this one, or?
That will be coming back in the final plat. So there's two things that could happen. Either the lot line moves to 10-foot setback, or the property owner would have to do a variance for that side yard setback. So the discussion we've had is it would be moved from seven feet to 10 feet.
So that change won't be made then?
It will be made before the final plat.
Okay, thank you.
Another discussion item, Glenn, perhaps this has already been resolved, but some years ago, there was a neighborhood drainage problem here, and I'm not sure if that was resolved.
That still exists. And what's happened is Southeast Street and that area drains through the property to the southwest corner of the front lot, and then across the next property to a culvert that drains in into our storm sewer system. But that issue hasn't changed. And it's very difficult to do that without redoing the roadway and putting in catch basins and then a pipe through the property. So right now, there hasn't been a significant discussion with Pat about changing the drainage.
And that would probably be totally unrelated to the plat.
It would be.
Yes. Other discussion on the motion to introduce the plat and call for public hearing. If not, we'll move to a vote. Voting close. Motion does pass. Now we'll move to agenda item number 13, the resolution for traffic control signage at the intersection of South First Street and Greeley Street.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. The issue of that intersection was brought to our attention for visibility. Of course, not just for snow visibility, because we've got that all over town. But it's kind of a Y-shaped intersection, and it's very difficult to see when you approach from the south. There you go, great. From the south on South First Street, when you're looking left, you can see a vehicle parked towards South First Street, yeah, right there. And that creates a visibility problem at the intersection. It used to be owned by one person, one lady that lived there, and she passed away. It was sold, and now it's like five different vehicles there on a regular basis. We think that by restricting parking from that driveway to the corner would significantly help in the visibility at that intersection. So that's what we're doing. We're making a recommendation to install no parking here in the corner from that driveway to the corner. If you have any questions, I'd certainly take them.
Questions for Glenn? John?
Okay, as far as the, you said there's about five cars. Are now discussion with the property owner as far as where those cars are going?
No. They will have to just not park there. They would have to park somewhere else, across the street, or I want to go there for just a little bit. I see Jim left. But right across from the South First Street designation, there's a crosswalk. And theoretically, there's no parking within a certain distance of that crosswalk either. So there is parking difficulties around that area, and we'll work with the police department to assist them in, you know, either designating by painting or something. I hate putting in too much signage when it's state law already. Okay, so that's what we'd like to do is that parking will have to move away from that. They've got garages, they've got off-street parking. They'll have to just deal with that. I think the safety issue at the corner is more important than providing the one parking spot.
Russ?
Glenn, as you know, that I brought this up to you numerous times, even before I was on the council. While I applaud your decision, I would like to, and maybe this is a start, you know, I'd probably go on that intersection five times a day at least. And the problem is, is that, again, that was a single-family home, double-car garage, and right now, it's been converted to kids living there, college students, whatever. They very seldom use the garage, so you get two vehicles in the driveway. And I think if there's four or five bedrooms in that house now, it's been converted. They'll park on Greeley Street, and then they'll park right around the corner on First Salt First Street as well. So while you're eliminating a problem by not parking from the driveway to the corner, I think what's going to happen is that they're going to all park right around the corner, and they're going to push their limit as far as they can to get back up to West Greeley Street as far as they. This is a start, but I would like to, you know, just remain open. And again, and I think the most of the problem is during school season. Summertime, I don't think there's a problem. I applaud the across-the-street parking. I think that would solve it, but right now, with snow and everything else, it's a terrible intersection. Right now, a fire truck could not get through that South First Street, because there's a car parked on South First Street on the east side and on the west side, and then there's usually one or two on the west side. So it's very difficult.
And I guess that brings up another question. What is this house zoned as?
I'm not certain.
Because if it's an R1, we should maybe, it is not. Because it can be just three people there, or two non-relatives living with, so if it's college kids, there cannot be more than three unless they have a variance on this house.
And we're concerned and check the zoning, but it's written it could be R2.
That's something to look into if they're in violation of that ordinance.
Sure.
I'm not trying to throw people under the bus, but we do have that ordinance out there.
Has there been discussion with the owner?
Excuse me?
Is the owner aware of the proposed action?
No.
Mr. Mayor, counsel, legal counsel brings up a good question, too. So when we put this sign up, where's the corner?
No parking here to the corner.
Where is the corner?
There's no, because it's.
It's a radius.
It's curved. It's radius.
No parking here to here.
Maybe it should say between signs and have another sign, have two signs.
No parking between signs.
That takes care of the second issue that Russ brought up on First Street.
On South First Street, that house right adjacent to the south is that Habitat Humanity, and it's got a single-car driveway, but there are normally a couple cars, one car in the driveway and one car in the street, which is, you know, which is fine. People are going to park on the street.
Such a streets there for.
But you add, you know, a couple of cars from that house there, that's what causes.
We could do between signs and put it around the corner far enough from.
Vision, is the vision coming from the other side? Where's our, where's our?
Yeah, the vision, the vision is coming from West College Drive down to First Street.
You mean West Greeley?
Well, from West College Drive to West Greeley down First Street.
And coming off of First Street.
The vision, the vision is coming from a car coming this way?
That's correct.
Down here. So I guess my question, Russ, would be what's, I don't see a problem here, because you're coming here. This is the problem. You can't see somebody coming this way, and as you come up to go out this way, or if you're coming out to go this way, if you get, you know, if the traffic moves this way, where's the, where's the, has there been any accidents there?
I don't believe there's been any accidents, but right now, again, with snow is a whole different issue.
Well, the snow is a.
But when you're in a normal summertime, you don't have the problem because of the college kids are not living there.
Right.
But when there's no snow, you've got, you've got, the people coming from the Y that live to the south part of town, the Y is over that way.
Over here.
Yep. They'll come down East Greeley Street, and if you're stopped at that stop sign on South First Street to take a left onto Greeley Street.
I want to take a left to Greeley Street.
Yeah, that's, that's a corner that, you know, but if there's cars parked there, you can't see somebody coming down West Greeley Street.
So I can't see people coming this way?
If they're parked on the north side of the West Greeley Street towards Schwanz, you know, then it's not a problem. I like the idea of no parking between the signs and just take it, maybe one parking stall around the corner. I think that would be a start.
True.
Put a parking, put a no parking sign from like here, there.
Yeah.
You know, we now in the next meeting, there's still going to be snow there, and we're not going to put a sign up.
Right.
I, you know, and I, I'm not disagreeing with the need here, but I'm really wondering if we take a little bit of time, because really, what we're doing would be eliminating all the adjacent parking for this property. That it would be good to have a conversation with the property owner, so that this isn't a surprise.
Yeah, I agree, Mr. Mayor. I tend to have a, I'm a little bit concerned about us maybe getting a little bit too much into day-to-day business of people using their property. And it's a residential intersection, and residential parking gets a little bit congested. And we're in an older part of town with narrower streets. And, I mean, I still, I don't want to penalize somebody for being able to use their, the adjacence to their property. They pay taxes on those streets, too. And I, off-street park or on-street parking is part of your deal in a residential. And I have a problem with us telling people they can't use it.
I'm more concerned about the issue that council member, council member Luzinski brought up with the zoning of the college. We've got five kids there.
Yep.
That's a more.
We have the ordinance.
And I think maybe, Glenn, you know, I agree with the mayor, but maybe a talk with the owner and just say, could they possibly park across the street? You know, and that might solve the whole problem.
Yeah.
We'll talk to the owner.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Good concerns, though.
And if it doesn't, and if it doesn't solve the problem, then, you know, when springtime comes, then we can address the signage.
I'd like to data, just to see how many accidents have been there. That should be easy to pull.
Would it be appropriate to make a motion to table this?
Well, either no, no action is kind of what I'm hearing.
Okay.
There can be some staff conversation. If we table it, it absolutely will come back at the next meeting.
I think let's just do no act.
Everybody okay with that?
Yep. Very good.
Well, then we'll move on then to agenda item number 14. This will be commission board liaison, actually, the regional development commission. Their meeting was canceled due to weather.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a Merit Center update that I got from Jasmine, and understand that these are things that are hosted, solicited, and negotiated by the Merit Center coordinator. And this doesn't reflect the additional things that go on with Minnesota West Technical and Community College. So just in the, in the recent weeks prior to now, there was a basic fire pump operations course. There were two sessions conducted, 25 firefighters attended. And this is kind of a new concept where gentlemen, we don't actually need to have a full piece of fire apparatus. He has a trailer that has all the controls and the pumps and teaches them operations without actually having to engage a fire rig. They hosted three two-day sessions for mental health de-escalation training for law enforcement. That was November 26 through the 29th and December 3 through the 4th. And this is mandated by the post board, 16 hours of training. So all the members of Lyon, Lincoln, and Murray County were training. There were 90 officers that conducted that training at Merit. There was a drug interdiction patrol tactics course was held at Merit. 50 officers from 26 different departments and counties attended that three-day course. A legislative town hall meeting was held at Merit. Merit also hosted the Minnesota Agricultural and Rural Leadership, the Marl Conference. 40 attendees were given tours of the facility, as well as a demonstration on the use of force and driving simulators. And there's ongoing projects include the Conex box build-out for fire training, and also some upcoming training on EMS, law enforcement, and fire service. In 2018, just short of 6,000 student attendances were at the Merit, not related to, again, Minnesota West. This was, I believe, training that was put on by Merit. But I might be wrong on that. That might actually do some student counting. But I think it just represents a good value and a good use of the, of the Merit Center, and it is getting traction. That I think the moves that have happened there in the last 18 to 20 months has been excellent, and I think we should be pretty excited as the driving track build-out goes out and we get the live burn training thing, I think it's really going to pick up. So just appreciate it, and I appreciate the work that Jasmine's doing out there in the, in the Merit Board. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mine have not met the Economic Development Authority. Did we meet? John, I think it was, yeah, I didn't get to go to mine, because I haven't any more complications, so.
The Planning Commission item that we discussed was the plat of the Foley addition, and we acted on that tonight.
John? Okay, we'll cover the EDA. We did meet. The action was in regards to the sale of land that we took up in the HRA today. So that was a good part of it. There was also discussion on the, well, we have the annual report was reviewed and gone through, so it was part of it. In regards to MMU, a couple of things there. We're well aware of the, you know, project with the water softening enhancement and the PSIG funding that wasn't there. Brad Rose, general manager, did, you know, testify regarding that. Just kind of a note, the delay that's been caused and some of the other things going on in the, around the country. The AE2S, which is doing the work on it, has up their pre-bid estimate by about a half a million dollars, primarily due to cost of the steel that's involved and the price increase there. So it's starting to, you know, definitely cost us some money in not being able to move on that project or not knowing what's going on with that project. One of the other things, kind of on the better side of MMU, they've, MMU's had a program in effect for some time, which is the Energy Efficiency Loan Program, where a organization can get funding to do a project update. And basically, it's the, they borrow through MMU, and then it gets paid off by the differential of what it, their savings are in the electrical bill due to the energy savings and their original bill. So they're basically keeping their original bill, paying off the loan to eventually get rid of that. That program has been running for about every two years, and they look at renewing it. This last meeting, they decided to make that a permanent item in their organization, so that loan is now an ongoing project. So there are several larger ones out there. There are some conditions on it, but people that want to do some energy efficiency and not do the capital outlay write-off have a means of working through a loan program with MMU. And I think that's about it.
Library board met. Just really wasn't much on the agenda. Assigned the committees, welcomed the new board member. Police advisory board has not met. We're going to start some interview processes, I think, in the middle of March. And CVD did not meet because of the audit not being completed, and I believe Lauren went on her honeymoon.
And Jim? So we'll move then to come to next agenda, council member individual item. Jim?
I have several here. First, and I visited Glenn about this last week, and Glenn, you'll maybe touch on this, the flood projection. I know you touched on it today, and I had visited Glenn and Jason already last week. And I think we should be aware that there is a flood risk this spring. And I'm assuming Glenn, I know Glenn, I assume, I know you'll be keeping an eye on that, and we need to keep our public informed. I mean, Marshall does have a daycare, but technically, we're in a flood plain. And there's a lot of snow.
No, we're not.
No, we're not.
We've been removed from it, but I mean.
We are, yes.
You're correct. But it is, we, Marshall could flood. I mean, it's not trying to put fear in people, but we need to prepare. Second thing I have, and it's an article I shared with council member Shaefer last week. It was, you know, as you guys know, I spend a lot of time in Duluth. They had an article in the Duluth News and Tribune, and they had five water main breaks in one day. And as we talk about special assessments with our fellow, you know, citizens in Marshall, we need to express to them that as the infrastructure gets older, we don't want to have five water main breaks in one day. Because it gets extremely expensive when you got to fix five water main breaks in one day. You know, you're looking at infrastructure up there that's 120 years old. I understand ours, we've kept ours up more. But part of special assessments is to keep our infrastructure up, so we're not, you know, losing those services. And as these businesses talk about special assessments, if you're out of business for three days because you don't have water, how much have you lost? I mean, it's a whole piece of the pie. I have copies of the articles. An interesting article to read, because they're struggling with special assessments up there, too. But if we let our infrastructure age and fall apart, it gets a lot more. But if we let our infrastructure age and fall apart, it gets a lot more expensive, especially when it's 25 degrees below zero. Third thing I have is, and Sharon brought this up, but it was an operating agreement between the City of Mankato and the CVP. I don't know if we currently have one, you know, and I know the current person there did not cause any trouble, I'll make that clear, but I think that we should maybe look at doing something like that, a little more transparency so we don't fall into issues ever again. Like I said, I believe Lauren is doing a wonderful job and it's not because of her, but it's to help her out, give her more comfort in what she does. And it lays out the success of the CVP much better than what it previously was. I think it's worth looking, I think it's worth looking at the one that Mankato has. It's a very good, very spelled-out operating agreement with them and their CVP and how it operates. I really think that's something that we as a city should look at. And last but not least, I brought these up last year, I think we did those town hall meetings last year, you know, per wards. We did them in March, I think that's something we should do again. It was good input from the public. Russ is here, so he won't be asking me so many questions as Sharon, but I think it was very good input from the public. There's a lot of folks that came and spoke at those that, what you never see, we see Doc all the time, but other than that, we don't see the public here, but we, I believe we had a very good turnout. So I would like to see if we can schedule those and do those again if the council still chooses. I think it was a good, a good assessment. With that.
There's no guarantees I won't ask you any questions.
Yeah, I can argue this year.
All right, okay. The one issue I had, I spoke with Glenn Olson prior to the meeting and I think it's being taken care of with snow, so nothing else.
John. Jim brought up the, the special assessments, Ways and Means met prior to this series of meetings tonight and there will be a recommendation coming to the council at the next, our next meeting relative to the special assessments. It's been hammered through and I would say a very special thanks to Councilman Bearcoler for a lot of time and energy that he put into it and researching and digging into options. And as it was described a little bit earlier tonight, this is kind of a mashed-up version of several of the things that we've seen, it takes a lot of things into account and so I'll be ready to take some action on it coming up in the next meeting, so.
Craig.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of things, I promise I'm not gonna talk about snow. Along the, the issue that, that Councilman Luzinski brought up regarding Duluth and infrastructure and assessments, I think it's important to realize that, 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 that infrastructure and the amount of work, and I've said this a number of times at meetings and I'll continue to, to, to pound on this, is that it's not just the assessments. That's also when we look at, at the debt load that the city carries. Consider that we don't have those water main breaks, we don't have the power outages. Our stormwater management has improved significantly during a couple of these wet years like last year especially, and we still had flooding, absolutely we did. I would have hated to think of what that would have been if we had the same infrastructure that we had in 93. And so when we look at, at our debt and we look at, at how the city has invested or spent money, however you wanna look at it, understand that the assessments only pay a small part of that. A lot of the other part of those projects that we pay assessments on are paid for by our bonds for these public, for these public projects and they're also paid for by our enterprise funds, by our, our surface water charges, by our wastewater charges, by our water use charges, and by our electric. And so we're pretty blessed, I think, in this community that there's been a good amount of thought done in the last 25 or 30 years and a lot of good planning and an awful lot of good work that's gone to really move, I think, the quality of life in Marshall forward. And that's part of what we're paying for and we pay for the debt, but I think it's important for people to really take a look at it and see what we get. So thank you, Jim, for bringing that up too.
And on top of that, Craig, you know, you bring up that debt and something people don't realize is, is 96, I lived on Box Elder Street, that was in the floodplain back in 96 and I believe I paid, if I remember correctly, a thousand dollars a year for flood insurance that I was required to have. I believe, like the mayor said, nobody in Marshall now was in the floodplain, so we're no longer paying that extra flood insurance and that's a huge savings to our citizens so they can spend it at our local businesses. But I, I remember correctly, I was over a thousand dollars a year on my flood insurance loan on my house.
That's all I have, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Steve.
I yield my time to the honorable Mr. Bearcoler.
Don't feel you have to take all of it.
I have nothing.
Thank you, Glenn. The, I'll hit on four quick things. Wasn't really planning on that, but as far as the discussion about the potential for spring flood, I did send a MOL out to staff that today, based on input I had from one of my team members who's a climatologist that's assigned to my team. And specific for Marshall, the concern is that, you know, we're at about 99% of the typical snowpack for any time that we've had. So in other words, we have, we all know that, we have a lot of snow and since January 18th, we have had no opportunity for melting, so it's all still on the landscape. Because of that, the National Weather Service has listed Redwood River at Marshall as greater than a 50% probability of spring flooding. That being said, there's a lot of uncertainty, it depends how long it remains cold and then how fast it warms up and if that's accompanied by another weather event, but the longer it stays cold, the higher the probability is that it's gonna, I mean, we know it's gonna melt and the speed of the melt is.
It sure will at this point in time.
Right.
We were in glacier once.
Between two and four inches of water that's on the surface, how, how quickly is that released? So I know Sharon has had discussion with staff about, you know, preparation and planning and kind of reviewing some of the best practices that we have. We've also had some discussion about some kind of public education through cable television and Sharon and I are doing a couple events, one is at the Senior Center unless it gets snowed out again and one with the Chamber of Commerce. And so there'll be opportunities to share this, but again, it's, you know, the, we know the probability is higher, but that's not a certainty because of the weather it could be in the next four weeks, so.
Mr. Mayor, isn't Chan-Hassan and Sioux Falls, the National Weather Service, I think, are starting their weekly flood briefings on the 3rd?
Yeah, and they, and actually the, the Chan-Hassan Office, National Weather Service, actually does the river forecasting for about four states.
Right.
So, so they do it for the Sioux Falls, you know, so you get your weather forecast from Sioux Falls Weather Bureau for Lyon County, but the river actually comes out of Chan-Hassan.
And it's not the 3rd, because 3rd is Sunday, but I, I know that, that the first one just comes up here, I think, Monday or Tuesday of next week.
Yeah, they actually have one this week.
Six or seven, yep.
So they'll be coming weekly. Very quickly, three other things. I did attend the League of Minnesota Legislative Session at the Capitol last Thursday. The Governor Walz met with the group and of course, you know, it's, he has a, a number of different things that have been proposed that will ultimately be, need to be considered by the other branches of government, both the House and the Senate. But one of the things that he will impact cities is the restoration of local government aid to the 2002 level. So whether or not that will be endorsed by the House and the Senate remains to be seen, but this is the first time for quite some time that local government aid restoration has been addressed. There also was a transportation hearing in Hutchison that the Senate Transportation Committee held. I was, it was on, this past Friday, I was away for work, I couldn't attend that. David Sturock did testify though on behalf of the Marshall Area Transportation Group, which he still leads that group. And really of interest there was the Highway 23 Coalition, four areas of, of focus and one of those areas of focus is expansion in incremental ways of Highway 23 to four lane. And the, last year, the incremental change that was funded in the state bonding bill was the two gaps on Highway 23 on either side of Haynesville. Now, one of their priorities for, is from Marshall, north of Marshall, where the four lane stops to Green Valley where there is four lane and passing lane. So it has, the coalition looked at that, that's, that's the next logical and doable and, you know, project. So that one is in the mix and I'll actually, will be attending, I'm on the Highway 23 Corridor Board and they'll have their meeting tomorrow morning and will, we're at 7:30 in the morning, so I'll be attending that. With that, we'll move then to the next agenda items, staff.
Are you, you got a fireside chat coming up with you?
Weather.
Weather permitting.
Permitting, so.
Is that the one at the, at Ominous Center? Put a plug in.
Thank you for reminding me of that.
Yeah, you are well prepared.
Sharon.
Mr. Mayor and council members, as was stated, a couple events for the mayor and I, March 1st at the Senior Center, which I know Heather Ratke has been working on this, first one got canceled. And then the next one is March 13th, which is the State of the City. It's something new that the chamber is trying. Many other cities do this. So far, there's been really good registration and it would be great to have the council members there too, just to show some support and, and obviously we'll mention the council member because it, it takes all of us and as we look forward to 2019, so I wanna put that out and, and I'll be prepping for that on the March 13th one especially. Have some PowerPoint and we might do a small video as well. Alex is working on that. Councilman DeCramer mentioned Ways and Means. The Ways and Means Committee has spent considerable amount of time looking at, at formulas and options and ways to come to some kind of direction with not only the project that's in question, but future work. And I do wanna mention Councilman Bearcoler, who did a tremendous amount of work in researching case law and thoughtfully considering the math behind assessments. And a lot of work that Councilman Bearcoler did actually was validated by, by an appraiser later on and so I really appreciate his guidance on this committee. It was helpful for me as a new person, not having the background in special assessments as, as maybe all of you do, so I wanna mention that as well. And then finally on emergency management, flooding, snow, et cetera, the staff have been discussing snow events and potential for future snow events and the city's role on that. The Chief Marshal has been making some, some requests as far as sheltering and so forth. If we would encounter something similar to Owatonna, which could easily happen going forward here based on the road conditions that are out there. And then there is a meeting set up with Lyon County and city, cities in the county to talk about potential flooding. It's a concern not only for Marshall. Obviously Tracy is facing, facing some, some similar concerns as Marshall and so I believe that happens next week. I'll confirm on the calendar, but we'll definitely have staff presentation there or present at that meeting as well. That's all I had, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Sharon. Glenn.
Couple of things, thank you, Mayor and Council. We talked a little bit about the amount of snow and the amount of snow on roofs and being very significant not only for the weight on the roofs. I know some years ago I had a broken truss in my garage because of snow loads. And so it's something for people to just be aware of, the heavy snow. We're not suggesting that us old guys get up on the roof and slip off. We had a comment that, you know, just one visit to the emergency room costs more than having someone come and do your roof. So that, that's one comment. The other one is the sewer vents, be really aware of your sewer vents because with a high amount of snow, if you can't see your sewer vent above the snow, they're not venting properly, most likely. And if you've got a little cap of, it looks like snow or ice on the top, but it's probably plugged as well. You can tell that by either gurgling in your stool or loss of water in your stool that just continues to go down because it's not vented properly. So those are two dangerous things that we wanted to bring to everyone's attention. Now, we're, we certainly are trying a brand-new method of snow removal during this snow emergency time and this was kind of done in collaboration with the staff and departments, but the idea of putting up those lime-green signs of snow removal, we, we did Fourth Street from Bruce Street to, to the highway today. It, it's absolutely amazing how much snow is there. We've got four or five trucks rented and we have the snow blower out there, we have PD out there, we have engineering staff out there stopping traffic because you just can't be working around traffic at each section. So we do kind of a block at a time, we're hauling that away. But I came down from the north, from Fourth Street, on Fourth Street from Bruce and it looked like an interstate. It was just so wild.
Seeparded.
It was, I mean, I'm not kidding you, it was so amazing. Now, we're gonna continue that process as we go and it's gonna take some time to do it, but I just wanna give you an idea. We did Fourth Street today for that section. Southview will start tomorrow, Saratoga Street, East Lyon, Bruce Street and East Street, Greeley and South Second Street, those are the starting points and it, it takes a long time to do this. We figured if we did the whole town and we didn't get any snow between, from now on, it'd take us about 28 days to do everything. Now, we have a separate crew that's doing cul-de-sacs and intersections, so there, there's two crews out there, one doing widenings and the other one's doing snow pickup. But if you happen to see any of those streets, guys, they've been working for about two and a half weeks straight and doing the best job that they can, and I know you all appreciate, but just give them a thanks. They're, they're doing an extraordinary job. The, the thing that we're missing right now is the boulevards. When you come and you see the cuts that have been made to widen the streets to the curb and gutter, I mean, they're as tall as you can reach. So anyway, that's our process, we're gonna continue with it. If we do get another snow, we're gonna go back to the regular snow removal and then come back to removal of the streets. So if you have any comments, questions, concerns, let us know, we'll try to address them. That's all I've got.
Okay, thank you, Glenn. Questions for Glenn? Dennis.
Thank you, Mayor. Council, just personally wanna thank everybody for their condolences and flowers at my mother's funeral recently, so thank you.
We'll move then to Agenda Item Number 19 is the information items. Agenda Item Number 20 is the upcoming meetings, which brings us to Agenda Item Number 21. Motion by Craig, seconded by Steve to adjourn discussion. If not, we'll move to a vote. Post-voting, the motion does pass, we're adjourned.